Thank you. All persons of the United States, join me in place and lead it to the flag of our country.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is stained one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. No one has signed up for three minutes. Please address the commission for anything other than what's on the agenda. Do not approve of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion for Mr. Stone to approve the agenda is presented.
Second.
Second for Ms. Mies. Hold the favor. Please raise your hand. Motion passed. Three, four, zero, against. Approval of the minutes February the fifth, two thousand nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion where this accepted minutes is presented.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Horn to approval of the minutes is presented. Second for Mr. Stone. Hold the favor. Please raise your hand. Motion passed. Three, four, zero, against. Approval of the minutes February the fifth, two thousand nineteen. Mr. Chairman, make a motion where this accepted minutes is presented.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Horn to approval of the minutes is presented. Second for Mr. Stone. Hold the favor. Please raise your hand. Motion passed. Three, four, zero, against. Approval of the minutes February the fifth, two thousand nineteen. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article five, edition seven of the Pacific County Plan, we need to find the commission that has any passing here and decide specific applications is afforded said on it and to make recommendations to the board supervisors, all the board of the county. In a conference of this important passage, we charge them for knowing their health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pacific County. We must ensure that all our decisions and recommendations be directed at these goals and that each be consistent with the environmental comprehensive plan and in the best interest of Pacific County and citizens of Pacific County. Anyone here to speak to the board of going zoning classes will be limited to three minutes. At seven oh three, case R nineteen dash oh oh five, voting public here, Ms. Henson.
Case R nineteen oh oh five, Charles and Carol Balderson have petitioned to rezone a total of sixteen point oh two acres located on Highway forty in the Bannister Election District from R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A one Agricultural District to make the zoning consistent with the adjacent parcel of land. Once the properties are rezoned to A one, all uses listed under section thirty-five one seventy-eight are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. and Mrs. Balderson are here to represent the petition.
Mr. Ms. Balderson, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. Well, do you have anything you'd like to present to the commissioners? I don't know what Ms. Hays has already presented to us.
No, sir. What we would like to do, we have been using a parcel that is agricultural, really both of them, for leasing for tobacco. I don't know the history of the residential, but we'd like to be consistent going forward with the zoning.
Any questions?
Um, Mr. Are you simply just, I'm raising tobacco, nothing else agricultural?
We have done some soybeans, and I think this year it's gonna be oats and stuff for pasture.
Okay. Oh, pasture, are you raising livestock on site?
No, sir.
Okay, is that for sale?
Uh, well, it's sort of like a bargain. I've got another farmer raising it, and he keeps the fields cleared and plowed.
Okay. I see.
Maintain, yep.
Any other questions? Thank you. No one has signed up, so thank you. At seven oh five, case R nineteen dash oh oh five, is closed to public here, Ms. Henderson.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, excuse me.
Um, in case R dash one nine dash zero zero five, I would like to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of this request to rezone from R one to A one.
Motion by Dr. Miller to recommend to the board supervisors change the zone from R one to A one. Second.
Second.
Second for Ms. Mies. Any discussions? Ms. Hays, will you call the roll for vote?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Mies?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
By vote of eight four zero against case R nineteen dash oh oh five, is recommended to the board supervisors to change the zone from R one to A one. Second.
Second.
Second for Ms. Mies. Any discussions? Ms. Hays, will you call the roll for vote?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Mies?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Case R nineteen dash oh oh five, is recommended to the board supervisors to change the zone from R one to A one. Second.
Second.
Second for Ms. Mies. Any discussions? Ms. Hays, will you call the roll for vote?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Mies?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
By vote of eight four zero against case R nineteen dash oh oh five, is recommended to the board supervisors to change the zone from R one to A one. At seven oh six, case R nineteen dash oh oh six, voting public here, Ms. Hays.
Case R nineteen oh oh six, Union Grove Amish Church trustees and Chatham Amish Trust Church trustees have petitioned to rezone a total of nineteen point six seven acres located on Walkers Well Road in the Callens Gretna Election District from C one Conservation District to M one Industrial District Light Industry to manufacture roof trusses. Once the property properties are rezoned to M one, all uses listed under section thirty-five three eighty-three are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Jason Truck is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Clark, report three. Do you have anything you'd like to present to the commissioners? I don't know what Ms. Hays has already presented to us.
No, sir.
Any questions?
Hey, I've got a question. If how? The intention is to rezone to manufacture trusses, is that correct?
That's correct.
How wide is the road on which this property is located and the site of the manufacturing of trusses? How wide is the road?
The Walkers Well Road?
Hmm?
I'm not familiar with it.
Is anybody familiar? Can anybody answer the question?
I mean, is it a country type road or?
I'm just thinking, you know, manufacturing trusses, I look at Riverside Roof Trusses Company, and that tractor trailers are extremely loaded with trusses and wide trusses when they go, and they going up and down fifty-eight, Highway fifty-eighty. I have just a question.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I noticed that Mr. Craddock from the Highway Department says that he's viewed the location and not see any issues as far as VDOT is concerned.
Thank you, A. Chair, if I didn't see that.
Sir?
I said, "Thank you, I did not see that."
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, that's in my district, although the package says Bannister, but I've traveled that road. I see no difference in any of the surrounding roads, and I think VDOT controls that, so thank you, Mr. Haymore, for bringing that to the attention.
Any other questions? No one has signed up to speak on that. Does anyone here who does not have our consent sign up? Please address this in public here. If not, seven oh nine, case R nineteen dash oh oh six, closed to public here. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, in case R dash nineteen dash zero zero six, I make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that this case be approved as requested.
I'll second the motion.
Motion for Ms. Mies, second for Mr. Haymore, recommend to the board supervisors to change the zone from C one to M one. Any discussions?
Discussion?
Yes, Dr. Miller.
Excuse us, is this a misprint? Is this Bannister or not?
It's Callens Gretna.
It is? Okay, misprint, okay.
Sorry about that.
Sorry, that's all right, quite all right.
And then there's the same one to A one.
That is correct.
No discussion, ladies and gentlemen, call the roll for vote.
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Mies?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Case R nineteen dash oh oh six, by vote of eight four zero against, recommend to the board supervisors to change the zone from C one to M one. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Hays, call the roll.
Mr. Chairman, in case R dash nineteen dash zero zero six, I make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that this case be approved as requested.
I'll second the motion.
Motion for Ms. Mies, second for Mr. Haymore, recommend to the board supervisors to change the zone from C one to M one. Any discussions?
Discussion?
Yes, Dr. Miller.
Excuse us, is this a misprint? Is this Bannister or not?
It's Callens Gretna.
It is? Okay, misprint, okay.
Sorry about that.
Sorry, that's all right, quite all right.
And then there's the same one to A one.
That is correct. Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Mies?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Case R nineteen dash oh oh six, by vote of eight four zero against, recommend to the board supervisors to change the zone from C one to M one. Any discussions?
Discussion?
Yes, Dr. Miller.
Excuse us, is this a misprint? Is this Bannister or not?
It's Callens Gretna.
It is? Okay, misprint, okay.
Sorry about that.
Sorry, that's all right, quite all right.
And then there's the same one to A one.
That is correct.
No discussion, ladies and gentlemen, call the roll for vote.
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Mies?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Case R nineteen dash oh oh six, by vote of eight four zero against, recommend to the board supervisors to change the zone from C one to A one. Thank you. At seven oh nine, case R nineteen dash oh oh seven, open to public here, Ms. Henderson.
Case R nineteen oh oh seven, Donian and Olivia Wilson have petitioned to rezone thirty point six six acres located on Cobb's Knob Road in the Tunstall Election District from M two Industrial District Heavy Industry to A one Agricultural District for agricultural use, plant trees. Once the property is rezoned to A one, all uses listed under section thirty-five one seventy-eight are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. and Mrs. Wilson are here to represent the petition.
Mr. Ms. Wilson, will you come forward, please?
Yeah, I'm calling Mr. Wilson.
Lighting things up a little bit.
Oh, Ms. Wilson, do you have anything you'd like to add to the commissioners? I don't believe so.
We just bought the property to invest and replant trees on it and college fund, pretty much, yeah.
Yep.
Any questions, Ms. Wilson?
No one has signed up for it, so thank you. At seven twelve, case R nineteen dash oh oh seven, is closed to public here. Uh, Mr. Stone?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, in case R nineteen oh seven, I make a motion that we're requesting to change.
Second to motion?
Motion by Mr. Stone to recommend to the board supervisors, second by Mr. Horn to recommend to supervisors from A one to A one. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Hays, call the roll.
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Mies?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
By vote of eight four zero against, case R nineteen dash oh oh five, is recommended to the board supervisors to change the zone from R one to A one. At seven oh six, case R nineteen dash oh oh six, voting public here, Ms. Hays.
Case R nineteen oh oh six, Union Grove Amish Church trustees and Chatham Amish Trust Church trustees have petitioned to rezone a total of nineteen point six seven acres located on Walkers Well Road in the Callens Gretna Election District from C one Conservation District to M one Industrial District Light Industry to manufacture roof trusses. Once the property properties are rezoned to M one, all uses listed under section thirty-five three eighty-three are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Jason Truck is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Clark, report three. Do you have anything you'd like to present to the commissioners? I don't know what Ms. Hays has already presented to us.
No, sir.
I've got a question. If how? The intention is to rezone to manufacture trusses, is that correct?
That's correct.
How wide is the road on which this property is located and the site of the manufacturing of trusses? How wide is the road?
The Walkers Well Road?
Hmm?
I'm not familiar with it.
Is anybody familiar? Can anybody answer the question?
I mean, is it a country type road or?
I'm just thinking, you know, manufacturing trusses, I look at Riverside Roof Trusses Company, and that tractor trailers are extremely loaded with trusses and wide trusses when they go, and they going up and down fifty-eight, Highway fifty-eighty. I have just a question.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I noticed that Mr. Craddock from the Highway Department says that he's viewed the location and not see any issues as far as VDOT is concerned.
Thank you, A. Chair, if I didn't see that.
Sir?
I said, "Thank you, I did not see that."
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, that's in my district, although the package says Bannister, but I've traveled that road. I see no difference in any of the surrounding roads, and I think VDOT controls that, so thank you, Mr. Haymore, for bringing that to the attention.
Any other questions? No one has signed up to speak on that. Does anyone here who does not have our consent sign up? Please address this in public here. If not, Ms. Hays, call the roll.
Mr. Chairman, in case R dash nineteen dash zero zero six, I make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that this case be approved as requested.
I'll second the motion.
Motion for Ms. Mies, second for Mr. Haymore, recommend to the board supervisors to change the zone from C one to M one. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Hays, call the roll.
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Mies?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Case R nineteen dash oh oh six, by vote of eight four zero against, recommend to the board supervisors to change the zone from C one to A one. Thank you. At seven oh nine, case R nineteen dash oh oh seven, open to public here, Ms. Henderson.
Case R nineteen oh oh seven, Donian and Olivia Wilson have petitioned to rezone thirty point six six acres located on Cobb's Knob Road in the Tunstall Election District from M two Industrial District Heavy Industry to A one Agricultural District for agricultural use, plant trees. Once the property is rezoned to A one, all uses listed under section thirty-five one seventy-eight are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. and Mrs. Wilson are here to represent the petition.
Mr. Ms. Wilson, will you come forward, please?
Yeah, I'm calling Mr. Wilson.
Lighting things up a little bit.
Oh, Ms. Wilson, do you have anything you'd like to add to the commissioners? I don't know what Ms. Hays has already presented to us.
I don't believe so. We just bought the property to invest and replant trees on it and college fund, pretty much, yeah.
Any questions, Ms. Wilson? No one has signed up for it, so thank you. At seven twenty-nine, case R nineteen dash oh oh seven, is closed to public here. Uh, Mr. Stone?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, in case R nineteen oh seven, I make a motion that we're requesting to change.
Second to motion?
Motion by Mr. Stone to recommend to the board supervisors, second by Mr. Horn to recommend to supervisors from A one to A one. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Hays, call the roll.
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Mies?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Case R nineteen dash oh oh nine, by vote of eight four zero against, recommend to the board supervisors to change the zone from R one to A one. If not, Ms. Hays, call the roll.
Any questions?
No one has signed up for it, so thank you. At seven twenty-nine, case R nineteen dash oh oh nine, is closed to public here. Ms. Henderson?
Yes, sir. I think this is the first step with the understanding that it wouldn't be actually able to operate to like the test of other.
Other inspectors.
That's true.
But the zoning has to be first, then they get the permission.
That's what I'm saying.
That is correct. They'll have to get a building permit once it's approved, or if it's approved, and then, you know, the inspectors go in and look at it for safety.
Any other questions? No one has signed up. If anyone here wish to address this who does not have an opportunity, if not, thank you. At seven sixteen, case R nineteen dash oh oh eight, is closed to public here. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In the case of R nineteen dash zero zero eight, I recommend to the board supervisors that True Way Deliverance Church be rezoned from R one to Business or B one.
Motion for Ms. Henderson to recommend to the board supervisors to change the zone from R one to B one, is that second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Mies. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Hays, call the roll.
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Mies?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
By vote of eight four zero against, recommend to the board supervisors, second by Mr. Horn to recommend to supervisors from A one to A one. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Hays, call the roll.
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Mies?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
By vote of eight four zero against, recommend to the board supervisors, second by Mr. Horn to recommend to supervisors from A one to A one. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Hays, call the roll.
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Mies?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
By vote of eight four zero against, recommend to the board supervisors, second by Mr. Horn to recommend to supervisors from A one to A one. Any discussions?
Discussion?
Yes, Dr. Miller.
Excuse us, is this a misprint? Is this Bannister or not?
It's Callens Gretna.
It is? Okay, misprint, okay.
Sorry about that.
Sorry, that's all right, quite all right.
And then there's the same one to A one.
That is correct.
No discussion, ladies and gentlemen, call the roll for vote.
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Mies?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Case R nineteen dash oh oh six, by vote of eight four zero against, recommend to the board supervisors to change the zone from C one to A one. Thank you. At seven oh nine, case R nineteen dash oh oh seven, open to public here. Ms. Henderson?
Case R nineteen oh oh seven, Donian and Olivia Wilson have petitioned to rezone thirty point six six acres located on Cobb's Knob Road in the Tunstall Election District from M two Industrial District Heavy Industry to A one Agricultural District for agricultural use, plant trees. Once the property is rezoned to A one, all uses listed under section thirty-five one seventy-eight are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. and Mrs. Wilson are here to represent the petition.
Mr. Ms. Wilson, will you come forward, please?
Yeah.
Good evening. No one has signed up for it, so thank you. At seven twenty-nine, case R nineteen dash oh oh seven, is closed to public here. Ms. Henderson?
Yes, sir. I think this is the first step with the understanding that it wouldn't be actually able to operate to like the test of other.
Other inspectors.
That's true.
But the zoning has to be first, then they get the permission.
That's what I'm saying.
That is correct. They'll have to get a building permit once it's approved, or if it's approved, and then, you know, the inspectors go in and look at it for safety.
Any other questions? No one has signed up. If anyone here wish to address this who does not have an opportunity, if not, thank you. At seven sixteen, case R nineteen dash oh oh eight, is closed to public here. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In the case of R nineteen dash zero zero eight, I recommend to the board supervisors that True Way Deliverance Church be rezoned from R one to Business or B one.
Single wide mobile homes or whatever put on it, so that, uh, that's my, our main concern. So.
Well, no one has called in, in opposition, but I'm sure that's a concern. But because this was a mistake of the county records and the, the, the applications been submitted to rezone the property from R1 to A1, is it, do you want to say anything about that, Ms. Hayes?
Well, what, I explained it to them. What happened was is when zoning was adopted in 91, the zoning, official zoning maps were recorded. Um, the commissioner revenues records had conflicts with the zoning maps. When we all went on the same system, um, we sat down and reviewed all of those, um, inaccurate parcels and tried to make them, make them right, or either, this is one of them that was, um, it was zoned A1 on the commissioner revenues records, but it was actually on the official zoning map as R1. The surveyor went out and surveyed the property to, you know, based on the estate or probating the wheel between the two remaining heirs, and they divided it in half, and it doesn't have any road frontage, so it really doesn't even meet the guidelines of the zoning ordinance for 75 foot of state maintained road frontage. So in order to probate the wheel, it would have to be A1 to divide it.
Did that answer your question that being away by not having those road frontage?
They can't.
They residential.
That is in the home way to probate the wheel.
Yes.
The zone has to be changed into the classification of A1.
Okay.
Of course, as I was saying, once it's classified and approved, A1, yes, all uses in A1 could be applied. I cannot say no when not.
Okay. I didn't, how much land was it? I forgot what y'all said.
Twelve point four six acres.
Okay, the, uh, if it, if it is, uh, zoned or whatever, agriculture, and can anyone just put a mobile home park on that, or is it have?
Not a mobile home park, no sir.
No, 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 no mobile home park.
Okay.
It's a different zoning that it has to be.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the mobile home park ordinance says any three or more lots tracks a mobile home, so if, if you had, if they tried to split it and, and put two on one track, two on one track, two, that would circumvent the mobile home park ordinance, that you couldn't do it.
Okay. All right. I guess that's all I.
Are you, uh, forward or against it, or are you, it's all right, go ahead with it? You don't have no objections?
Uh, she's going to speak soon. Do I have to answer that?
No, sir.
Hey, I'm just here because she made me.
There you go.
Do y'all have any questions before we, before we go?
No.
I'm Sophia Baltimore.
Ms. Baltimore, I'm calling with that's well.
Thank you. We were just concerned as to what, we've been involved with this in another property that we own, and someone came in and put, um, a mobile home right almost up to our side wall. So we were just concerned as to what would be put on this property. We don't really have a problem with what you all are saying, but we were just interested to know why this was being done, and was there a reason other than just the zoning, or, yeah, we were just concerned as to what would be joining our property, because, you know, if you have a 70 acre farm, you don't want a little spot to call someone to say, we don't want to buy that property because of what's joining it. So I don't know if we are opposed, or if we're not, we're just concerned as to what would be there when it's resolved.
I hope we answered your question, because we don't have no control, and once it's zoned, I mean, all uses in A1 will be dismissed. Any questions for? Thank you. Uh, Ms. Moon?
Yes, sir.
You get to say the final word. Do you have anything you'd like to add to the?
No, sir. As I said, this property is going to be divided between my niece and nephew, and their mother's house adjoins, is, her property adjoins these two lots. Uh, they do not front on 40, um, as far as what these two will do with the property, I don't know. I don't suspect they're going to be doing anything. They're young unmarried people at this point. Um, Jason is working in Lynchburg, Carol is living in Georgia, so we just need to probate the will.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Case 725, case R19-009, closed to public hearing. Ms. Meese?
Um, I feel like that in order to probate the will, this is about the only direction we can go. So in case R dash 19 dash 009, I make a recommendation that we, uh, ask the board of supervisors to approve. This case from R1 is requested to A1.
I second.
Motion by Ms. Meese, Ms. Southside.
Second.
And Mr. Haymore, recommend to the board supervisors, change the zone from R1 to A1, have a discussion, did not, Ms. Hayes, call the vote.
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
By a vote of eight, four, zero, against, case R19-009, recommend to board supervisors, change the zone from R1 to A1. Case 727, case R19-010, open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes?
Case R19-010, Marvin and Margaret Hilton have petitioned to rezone a total of 19.12 acres located on Highway 58 West and on Stony Mill Road in the Westover Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District. Once again, the, the county's original maps, um, showed that the property is R1, and on the commissioner revenues records, it was shown as A1. So, once the properties are rezoned to A1, all uses listed under section 35, 178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Hilton is not here, um, for the case, but it can still be heard.
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I spoke with, uh, met with the, uh, with the Hiltons. He has been, uh, for lack of a better word, fooling with this for about eight or nine years. And I'm not exaggerating, uh, because he was saying that the zoning people should enter a clerical order correcting it, and then he was saying that the commissioner revenues office should have correct, issued a correction order on the thing. To be honest with you, I pretty much agreed with him. I told him that if we made a mistake in our office, I had to enter an order as bad as I hated to, uh, or have an order entered as bad as I hated to, to correct the mistake. But anyhow, uh, he says that, uh, I think the final, uh, after wrestling with this for these number of years, that, uh, he's pretty much convinced in order to get it the way that he wants it, that, uh, he needs to come before us to have it rezoned. So, uh, based on that, uh, Mr. Chairman, in case, uh, R19-010.
You've got to close now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've got to close just a minute.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Is, uh, no one signed up for it? Does anyone here wish to address this case before we go? If not, 729, case R19-010, is closed, closed here.
Now I can go, huh?
Get him, boy.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Case R19-010, uh, asked that it be presented to the board of supervisors to change it from R1 to A1. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Haymore.
I'll second the motion.
Recommend to the board supervisors, and second, by Mr. Dudley, the zone be changed from R1 to A1, have a discussion, did not, Ms. Hayes, call the vote.
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
By case R19-010, by vote of eight, four, zero, against, recommend to board supervisors, the zone be changed from R1 to A1. It's 7/3, case R19-011, is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes?
Case R19-011, Pittsvenny County Board of Supervisors has petitioned to rezone 14.89 acres located on East Whit Road in the Chatham Blair's Election District from A1 Agricultural District to RMF Residential Multifamily District to renovate the old Blair's School into apartments. Once the property is rezoned to RMF, all uses listed under section 35, 280 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, actually Greg is going to represent this, and he has some other people here to speak on behalf of it.
Mr. Southside?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I think probably a lot of folks are familiar with this particular property. It, it is a former school, has had actually a couple of school lives in its past in Pittsvenny County, located close to Highway 29, the East Whit Road intersection. The property, uh, when it was no longer in use as a school, it reverted back to the board of supervisors as far as ownership. Uh, it fell into a state of disrepair, extreme disrepair. Um, it has been a health hazard for quite a few years now. We, uh, we used the gymnasium on the site for basketball games up until the point that people became uncomfortable with the air quality and such associated with having children in there playing basketball. So, the county's wrestled a number of times with what to do with the property. We have, uh, looked into building up or renovating the property. We've also looked at tearing down the building. Um, and there's significant costs associated with even tearing down the building. So, uh, as we considered what to do with this property, we were approached by a company, which I will, uh, have these gentlemen speak a little bit, but we were approached by a company that takes old schools or old buildings that need a new life and turns them into residential apartment buildings, and have a significant history of doing that. So, they came and talked to the board supervisors about the possibility of us partnering with them to turn this into a beneficial use to the community as opposed to a derelict building. The board supervisors is supportive of pursuing this option. Um, the first step in the process is to rezone the property to residential multifamily for apartments. So the board of supervisors, that's the reason that they're requesting this rezoning. And if, uh, we've got two gentlemen here with landmark properties, if you can tell a little bit about what you all have done on similar properties, I think it'd be very beneficial.
Good evening. Please state your name.
John Stiltner with Landmark Asset Services.
John?
Stiltner.
Stiltner?
Yes, sir. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. Uh, I work for Landmark Asset Services Group of Companies out of Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Our love and what we've been doing for about 35 years now as a family-owned company, and we're going into our third generation, is working with rural communities to revitalize downtowns and historic structures that have fallen to dilapidation. We have been successful in doing so on 85-plus adaptive reuse, uh, properties. Uh, we develop, uh, around southeast, uh, back in early 2000, tried to go nationwide, so we're in nine states now, uh, because of that, but our main footprint is Virginia, North Carolina, South Carolina. I believe I said we were based out of Winston-Salem, uh, been there since our, uh, introduction as Anderson Development Company by Dwayne Anderson, who founded our company, uh, about 33, 34 years ago. Our vision for the, this project, it was brought, brought to us by a friend, Joyce French, who works around the state, uh, with communities to get grant, or do grant programs for sewer water extensions, uh, uh, tearing down buildings, uh, different things like that, and she, she told us about this school, we got to looking into it, and, uh, immediately kind of fell in love with the building, the ideal of the community, and what it could possibly turn into. Uh, the vision would be for, uh, 55 multifamily, uh, units, workforce housing, and it would be comprised of 11 one-bedrooms, 29 two-bedrooms, and 15 three-bedrooms. I think I got that right. And the average size of your one-bedrooms are anywhere from 660 square feet to about 750. Your two-bedrooms range from about 870 to 970, 80, depending on where you're at in the building, and our three-bedrooms, uh, I think we've got one or two upwards of 1,200, 1,300 square feet. Uh, we, we want to, uh, utilize this building for multi-purpose, uh, and also, uh, work with the county as, uh, in a public-private relationship to, uh, do a complete adaptive reuse. Some of our first steps that we've already taken is to, uh, get a architect historian on board with us to write up a, uh, uh, package to go to National, first to the H.R., the National Park Service, to have this building listed on the National Register of Historic Places. It takes about a year. We started that process. She'll be coming up interviewing a ton of people. We've also been, uh, working with the Southside Soccer League, and also Southside High School alumni, and keeping everybody in the loop and talking to them as we go through the process of concepts and designs, what we could utilize spaces in the building for. Uh, the auditorium would be untouched, untouched in a sense of its historic, but completely upbitted, uh, with, uh, new HVAC roof systems, uh, electrical, uh, and plumbing in the restrooms, and also, uh, uh, fit those for, for handicap accessibility, uh, replacing stage curtains, such things as that, but it would still be a full, functional auditorium, just new, when we get done with the historic, uh, features of it. And, and, in that, uh, we, we are looking to lease that back to the county for a nominal amount, dollar a month, dollar a year, so that they can utilize it for the alumni, for the soccer league, uh, for the purpose of drawing community to that area, give them a space to, uh, uh, do, do what they need, whether, whatever it may be. Uh, that, that'd be in the county's hands. Also, be working with the soccer league to, uh, build them a field house so that they can store their equipment, uh, and leave their concessions in the historic shop building. If historic allows, but we've been communicating with them on, if, if this happens, or if this happens, how spaces would move around. Uh, but working as a group, the county, the soccer league, and the alumni to come up with a great idea of how the county, uh, can re, reutilize this school to serve the community for another 30 to 60 years. I think it was built in 1952, and, uh, it's now, uh, knocking on 70, 70 years old, so our, our hope is to not tear it down, but to revitalize it and repurpose it so that it, it serves the community moving forward for decades to come.
First question?
Yes, sir.
Abatements?
Abatements.
And asbestos.
Yes.
Is that going to?
No, sir. Yeah, we do have it in our, uh, construction budget to do so. Uh, we, we are applying for a competitive tax credit, uh, through Virginia Housing and Development Authority, and once awarded will be, uh, we use Swift Creek Environmental out of Richmond, Virginia. They do all of our environmental, so they'll do a phase one, phase two, and then we'll contract either them or other abatement companies to come in, uh, whether it be just asbestos for this company and the lead-based paint for others. There's some septic tanks that's got to be removed. Uh, obviously, there's going to be lead, and there's definitely asbestos there. We just do not know the extent. We don't know about underground storage tanks, but a, a phase one and a phase two will be completed, and all abatement encapsulation will also take place, uh, prior to the construction beginning.
That will be at no cost to the county?
That is, that is correct, sir.
Uh, well, are y'all bonded, to be bonded to the county, so if you start this phase and decide to go out of business, you leave us hanging in your hole? Uh, are you bonded for it to be complete?
Uh, the, the, how's the best for me to answer that? If, if we fail and go out of business, the investors that bring in the equity and, and give us the dollars to build it will replace us, and the people who replace us will complete it.
Mr. Hunt, is that, or is that?
Would that be part of the county?
The county, I mean, or do they have to be bonded, like, we require the solar farms and everything?
Well, look at, honestly, if they walk away and they've done anything to it, it's going to be in better shape than it is now. Um, but.
Right, but the county would be liable to fill in the expense to finish out the abatement with?
Well, we would just board it up and do nothing with it. Uh, right, I mean, if you've been in this place, it's one of the scariest buildings I've ever been in.
I agree, I'm, from what I can see from my own sight.
We will, we will, we will, uh, take steps to fully protect the county. What the process is going to occur is if the rezoning is successful tonight, um, the board supervisors, before they can donate any publicly owned property, they have to have a public hearing under the state code. It's anticipated that that is going to occur on Tuesday, March 12th. Um, if the board agrees to donate to them, we would enter into a two-year due diligence donation agreement, where they have two years to get their finances in order, meaning their tax credits and their federal and state money. At the end of that two years, um, if they successfully have, uh, gathered the money they need to complete this project, then at that time, we would deed over the land, um, and at that time, we would have all assurances in place to fully protect the county.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I know it's not a security, but, uh, for the hundred-plus projects that we've developed and started, we've always completed them. We've never started one and not completed it, and we've had three burned down right after starting, and we just rebuilt it. So we, we, we have a hundred percent track record of completing what we start.
Do, we don't have no rec, do y'all have records of the size, or Mr. Hunt, or?
Of the company?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They, they've got a.
You're sliding out of the package, and we don't have nothing except what's presented by you, Mr. Hunt.
Right. I think in, in one small way, this is similar to the nursery project that we heard earlier in that there's a whole lot of steps to go after tonight, but these guys are applying for historic credits and historic designations, and the first thing they have to be able to show is, yes, the property is properly zoned for apartments. So if it's, if it's zoned for apartments, then they can go to all of the various other steps, including, uh, boatload of legal documents with the county attorney, I'm sure, that will flesh out these details, but they can't even take that first step unless they can show the state, yes, it is suitable for apartments.
I, I can't fathom if the board of supervisors has given any thought to, I mean, we're all aware of what workforce properties, uh, consist of, and you're going to locate one right next door to the highest accredited school in the county? Southside High, Southside Elementary School, it's the highest accredited school in the county. You're going to put workforce housing right next door? I just, I, I have a problem with that.
Uh, the county is going to own the property. Am I, am I correct on that? That's what I've been told by several supervisors. Uh, who's going to own the property is, for me, is the number one question. Is, is this company going to own the property, or is the county going to own the property?
Eventually, they're going to own the property.
Eventually?
Well, there's a two, if this rezoning is suc, successful, um, there's, there'll be a donation agreement that's entered, and they have two years to do their due diligence. During that time, we will retain ownership of the building, but eventually, if, if they get the money they need to proceed with this project, uh, there will be a deed that transfers ownership from the county to, uh, Landmark or, or one of their other corporations.
Including the soccer, the, the reason I may have to explain it, in my discussion with several supervisors, you said the soccer field, and everything's not going to be affected?
It, it will not.
That's correct. They are only carving off, and you can speak to this, this, the soccer fields, the county will retain ownership of the soccer fields.
That is correct. We're, we're, we're only carving off five acres, which is the, the building, the parking lots, and the, uh, front yard.
Five acres?
That package says 14.89 acres.
14.89 acres.
What we're purchasing of it, or what we'll be receiving of it and transferred ownership will be 5.4 acres, and the remainder will retain in ownership of the county.
Right. The, the board is looking to rezone the property that they currently own, and then they're in the process of negotiating now, just how much do we need for the ball field, or is the auditorium going to be included in the property, you know, what about the property in the back? So that will be one of those steps that comes after the rezon. Can you talk about, um, workforce housing? What does that mean exactly, and versus government subsidized?
Um, the best way to classify workforce housing is that it's for moderate income individuals. Um, the easiest way I know to say it is that it's not section eight, um, it's not rent, rural development subsidized housing. Our tenants do not get a check, which they then give to us to pay rent. Um, I think my very lowest rent, I only 10% of my units have this, would be $450, and my average rent is more like $800. So this is a moderate income property. It is not a section eight or federally assisted program. The government simply gives the tax credits to, sells the tax credits to a corporation like Walmart, for instance, and that is just to pay for the construction. The actual rent has to be afforded by each and every tenant.
Oh, is sex offenders to be allowed to live in this place?
Absolutely not. We have strict credit and criminal background checks on everyone who moves in or tries to move in through our application process, and we have very stringent rules and regulations. And if I find out you are a sex offender and you somehow got in there, which in my history has never happened, we would evict you.
So you're saying, um, moderate rent, what are you saying, the, say, the one-bedroom units, what are they going to rent for?
$450 a month?
Is that what you're saying?
They're tiered, so you have.
Because I'm thinking, here locally, right here in Chatham, Chatham Elementary School was converted to Chatham Lofts apartments.
Sure.
My youngest daughter-in-law lived, and she was the third tenant to rent a unit in there, and they have never been fully occupied because of the rent, and $450 to $800 a month. I'm just thinking, are you going to be able to do that in the location in Blair's?
I do believe so. We've run an extensive market analysis, um, that shows that a lot of people from Danville will be able to afford it. Um, you know, you hire that $800 rent equity, that's for a larger three-bedroom, so that's often a man and his wife and their kid, or two kids, um, a family, really, and then.
Is any utilities, or TV, direct TV, anything like that? I mean, is that a part of it?
No, sir. Just water, sewer, and trash collections. The, the tenant will be, will pay their own electricity, their own cable. We'll have free wifi in the community room, and we're, we also will, uh, have computer rooms, uh, with free internet, computers and printers for the kids and adults to use, but the, the unit themselves, from your, your electricity to, to your cable, to your internet, will all be, uh, paid for by the resident, not, not the project.
John, what's the closest unit y'all, place that y'all have done?
Uh, we've got, we've got four locations in Danville. Uh, well, two, but, uh, really four locations. Uh, we redeveloped, or we, we did an adaptive reuse of the Schoolfield Schools property, uh, Schoolfield Schools, the old Dan River Mill Schools that they built. We also did a redevelopment of the, uh, uh, Westmoreland Schools property. Uh, both those were, uh, converted into elderly housing. We have a family, uh, project on Lynn Street. Uh, it was not the first, but one of the first mills on that mill row in Danville to, uh, be developed in family property. We actually took the Southside High School alumni to that property, showed them around, showed them units, showed them the community rooms, uh, so that they get a feel of, or, I don't want to call it a product, but how, how we care for the historic and what it turns into. Uh, we also have a project over in Martinsville, Virginia, the old Martinsville novelty, uh, 70, 72 units, I believe, they're family, uh, South Boston. We, uh, developed the old Taylor, it's Taylor Lofts, but it's the old Taylor Tobacco in the main circle of downtown in South Boston, getting kickstarted, the downtown revitalization that took place there. Uh, close by, that, that's the ones that come to mind, uh, several in North Carolina, from Eden to Madison. Uh, we have 36 historical adaptive reuse projects in North Carolina. Uh, most recent one, uh, was the City Albemarle. We partnered with City Albemarle to revitalize, uh, uh, an old elementary school right next And since we placed that in service three years ago, they're up to about a, uh, or down to about a thirty-five to forty percent vacancy. There's been two or three other adaptive reuses in their downtown of historic buildings. So, this is to stimulate that growth there, and it was either tear the building down or, uh, rehabilitate it. And, and the use of the, uh, as everybody knows, whenever you renovate something, it costs you a lot more than building it new. So, the subsidy of the, uh, state tax credit that we get, and we take it to market and sell it to investors to bring in private investment to pay for the construction, this will be about a, it's about eight point three million, we're not done with our numbers, uh, right now. So, we're, we're between, uh, eight point three to nine million dollars of an investment. And that's what we're putting on it this year. Next year, when we win the award and we actually go sell the tax credits and bring in that six to seven million in equity, and we still have to go get per, perm loans to, to fill the gap of that nine million from what we sold, sold the tax credits for. Uh, but a year from now, those construction numbers could be up eight percent to twenty percent. We, we've, it's been crazy the past three years on what construction's done. We've seen it stay steady and it's hold, 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 but it, it could go up to nine point five million dollars by the time it's all said and done. But right now, we're, we're estimating, uh, uh, between eight and nine million dollar investment.
You mentioned, you mentioned some of the former students or something at the school, is that, is that correct? That you said you showed?
Uh, we, we took members of the, uh, Southside High School alumni-
Okay.
To Lynn Street Lawson, Danville, uh, to gi- give them a tour through the project and, uh-
That reaction? What was that reaction?
I, I think generally, they, they, they loved it.
May I address that?
Yes, sir.
Um, I am directly familiar with the South, members of the Southside Alumni Group. And, um, of course, I think everybody is aware that Southside Elementary was originally an African-American community, um, service school for many years. And the people that are a part of the Southside Alumni, um, do have a specific group that has met, have met with, um, the gentlemen's, the gentlemen, um, here. And I can say specifically in conversation with them that they have taken a look at the plans and are very much pleased with what, um, is being discussed tonight.
Thank you, sir.
But they, they had plans, we don't, we haven't had nothing to, to, you know, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. That, what, well, I, I understand what you're saying, but from what the Southside Alumni folk, um, have seen and heard, they are saying that they're very appreciative of, um, the plan.
You said you was gonna have it on the, try to get it on the national registrar, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Sure. Tell me the process of that, and, um, with that, if it does get there, does the federal government have any funding for that?
The pro-
On the maintenance side?
On the ma-
Yeah, to keep it up. If it's on the registrar and it's supposed to be a historical place, would the, you know? Just tell me the process of that first.
The pro- process i- i- is, we would send Heather up here, who's our architect historian, has done this many times for us, and she would, uh, take photos of the whole property, she'd go to the library, dig up as much historical hi- history as possible. The big, biggest history we get's verbal. So, we, we would set her up, or we would put her in contact with the Southside High School alumni, because I think a- a- out of about anybody, they know more about the history of this school. So, she would write, write up, uh, what they call a PIF, which is, i- i- is a, uh, 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 detailed history of the project. It would go to the Department of Historic Resources in Richmond, Virginia. They, they would review it, recommend it, they then place it on what they call the study lists, list. Then, in the meantime, we would be, uh, compiling documentation and history to put in a, uh, package to DHR, uh, to, to have it listed on the national register. And this package would include, um, uh, districting around the project, what took place, architect, uh, students, principals, i- i- more detailed than, than the PIF. And that, that would then go, go through a vote or a committee with, uh, Department of Historic, uh, Resources with Virginia. And if they voted it, that it, it met the criteria to be, uh, listed on Virginia's historic register, they would then send it to the National Park Service, which would also go through a committee. And, and if information found that it's, uh, worthy, then they would recommend and have it listed on National Register of Historic Places. Now, being, you get a certificate, you can get a plaque, but being listed on National Register of Historic Places is, um, i- i- it don't tie it anything. Like, uh, per se, i- i- if we could not win the award and could not move forward and secure our financing, and the county wanted to tear it down, so be it, they could tear it down. Uh, it's, it's more of a, a, a privilege to have that, uh, listing.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, and with that listing goes into your next question on, uh, the, the federal government, what that then allows you to do, any money that you spend on the building. We're not talking about like mini blinds or appliances, but fabric of the building, uh, you count, uh, is called basis. And for the dollars that you spend on, uh, restoration of the building, you can apply for, uh, national historic credits.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and that is a twenty percent, uh, match. Maybe you spend a hundred dollars, they'll give you twenty dollars in credits, and then you gotta go sell those to somebody or to an investor. And a lot of times, it is a Walmart, or it's, uh, your big insurance companies, or a BBNT, uh, those type of corporations. And as far as maintenance, they, they do not fund any upkeep, uh, through just your typical maintenance of gutters and yarn, uh, yard mow and stuff like that. But every sixth year, you can reapply for national tax credits, or national historic tax credits, for the money that you spend. If you have larger capital improvements, they have a threshold you have to spend up to an amount before it actually kicks in. And the, the other thing, having it listed on the, uh, Virginia, uh, register, is Virginia has a state historic tax credit of twenty-five percent, which brings in also that additional, uh, uh, funding. And, and the, these tax credits, they, they, they're, they're commodities, so they sell for different things. And depending on what's going on, uh, at the time, you get higher prices or lower prices. Depending on the size, you might get a larger price for it. We've, uh, over our, uh, several decades of, of working in this business, we, we've got a lot of great relationships, so we're, we're, we're able to maximize those resources and do projects where other developers don't wanna do.
Steve, I might add, um, I believe that tax credits are only available to private individuals or nonprofits. I do believe counties and local governments are categorically exempt from using tax credits. You have to confirm with your county attorney, but that's always been my understanding. So, you have to have a private developer come in to be able to access those resources.
Do, do you understand, that, uh, how, um, did, oh, that, for every five years, just when you would upgrade, you maintained, was no maintenance going on?
No, sir, I wa- I was answering the gentleman's question about is there a program in place to help with maintenance? And, uh, they, they allow you to reapply for those historic cre- tax credits about every sixth year. So, if you had major improvements, like we had to replace the roof, or, you know, tear up the parking lot, well, the park wouldn't cover the parking lot, but if we had major renovations to do, you could apply for it. Essentially, no, there, there's no money out there to keep up the maintenance. We have our own maintenance program, and we operate about forty-five hundred dollars a unit back into the buildings for, whether it be, uh, painting every two, you know, three to five years, carpet replacements, uh, cleaning, we'll have a janitor, maintenance, uh, site manager o- o- on-site, and then mowing the lawns, the things, the things of that nature. So, we'll be maintaining it. We, we are a, uh, developer and also a property manager. We, we manage our own properties. We don't third-party manage it. We don't turn them over to somebody else. We own it, uh, develop it, and, uh, uh, operate it, and, uh, do the property management ourselves.
But you do not have, you do not keep the county informed in, in the things, is that, am I correct on that? There's no warning to, to protect the county?
The-
That y'all will follow through and proceed with this much?
I, I'm struggling to understand the logic. These people are contemplating spending between ten and eight to ten million dollars.
Right.
They're not gonna let an eight to ten million dollar investment, they're not gonna not cut the grass or paint or maintain, um-
The property wouldn't transfer until we had, we wouldn't transfer property until we can close, and we can't close until we have not, not just the equity, but also our perm loan, uh, forward committed. We always do forward commitments on our perm loan because of interest rates and how crazy they can get. So, all financing and all monies will be available at time of close when we purchase the property. So, it, it's there to do the work.
And we wouldn't start any evacuation or construction activity until we purchase the property from the county, in which case we have private insurance.
Right, in, in that interim gap, the county will still maintain the property.
So, it is an expense to the county, is that correct?
Massive expense.
No more than it already is.
I mean, it's a space now, yeah.
Ain't talking about being scary. I was in there. I was in first class nineteen sixty-eight. It was scary as hell.
Yes. Right now, the county, uh, aside from the soccer field and concession stand and maybe an outbuilding, um, it is completely unused by the county. We have gotten staggering numbers to tear it down because of the evacuation issues. We've also gotten staggering numbers to even put a roof on it.
Hmm.
Um, so, right now, um, the two options are, at some point, the county's gonna have to deal with this, or, um, hopefully, the tax question will come through after a two-year period and have private investments, uh, bring this back to its former glory, get it back on the tax rolls, maintain it going forward to make it a viable part of our county.
If, if we had to spend, I think it was in the neighborhood of five hundred thousand, I believe it was, to demolish it, then, you know, obviously, there'd be nothing there. So, it is a, underneath the ugliness as far as the mold or whatever, it's a pretty solid building, from what I understand that y'all find.
That, that is correct.
And I know you don't have plans at this early stage, but you would be working within the footprint, right? Within existing buildings?
Yes, with, with, the, the only plan to, to do any additional structure would be a field house for the soccer equipment and, and their equipment, uh, which would, would be put behind the school, so it could not be seen from the front facade.
And if I may interject, prior to us considering this, we have offered this building to the school system, they said no. We've offered to other county departments, they said no. We have worked with Southside Alumni Associations, they don't have the means to do this, but they have graciously agreed to work with them. We offered to the soccer people, they said no. So, uh, really, we attempted to see if there are any other need for this within the county system, and the answer is no. So, um, we view this as getting a significant liability off our books potentially, and turning it into a significant asset for the community, the tax base, the citizens, individuals who need apartments, um, the, the, I'm not speaking for the board, um, but I know from a staff point of view, uh, we're very excited about this potential possibility.
And al- also, Mr. Chairman, we did, we brought five sets of, of where we're at currently wi- with design. Uh, we've got our architects, they're at work right now, continuing to work, uh, towards filling up spaces, uh, and put walls in and furniture, so that we have a full conceptual plan for application due March fourteenth. And I can bring those up, but I apologize, I did not bring enough to share to everybody.
One other thing, to my, Mr. Chairman, just to mention as far as background, um, we started down this path several years ago, that we were approached by somebody that was talking about developing the school. And as we worked with them, they expected a lot from the county. We weren't willing to commit to it. Um, when I was contacted by Ms. French, and she indicated that she knew some gentlemen that were, you know, potentially interested in the school, and I told her, I said, well, we've been down that route before, and everybody expects too much from the county. She said, no, these guys have a history, and, and she had personal knowledge that you guys had followed through.
We, we just completed this same thing with Mecklenburg County. Uh, they had a, a school on the books, and it meant a lot to a lot of people in the community, but it was falling down. And they, we, we went in and we worked with Joyce and, uh, the, the town, uh, of South Hill, and we got it done. And we are under construction, we're about thirty percent completed with construction of a fifty-five unit, uh, uh, family housing project in, uh, the county, uh, Mecklenburg County, just outside of South Hill town limits, right in front of their fifty-some acre sports complex that has the baseball fields and indoor batting ra- cages, and it was a perfect fit. As the soccer club i- 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 is really a hu- it kind of, it brings me to the project of, what do the kids do after school, what programs? Mom works, dad works, we may have one car. Kids don't have options. Well, if you live here, you have a twenty-four week out of the year option to go be a teammate, to have community, to have that, that esprit de corps and that, that team-building function. And they get to choose, because they're not burdening their parents. So, this, this is kind of giving your kids some after-school, uh, health programs that they can choose to do, because it's right there on-site where they live. That, that is one of the big things to me that, 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 that has, has me attached to this project. It's not just so much the historic's and stuff, it's, it's the benefit to the children that are gonna live here that they have their own choice. Their parents don't make the choices in this sense, they just got to say yes or no. They don't have to take them anywhere. They can walk right outside and be a part of something. Where in a lot of cases across the county, you, you can't do that.
Uh, I'm not understanding what you're saying, y'all making them keeping the soccer fields, everything open to the public or?
Yes, sir.
How you gonna do that? I mean, as a dad and a granddad, I never wore two cars driving from the forest to county around to play soccer. All right, their life is full of cars. There's no place to park. If you develop, the student is doing the park, it's complex. So, you ask about if people play the park, you know, and they have two or three cars themselves. I see a problem if you're gonna keep the soccer fields open, uh, with people complaining about that, they park in my spot, I come home from work and play the park.
Right. Um, we're, we're designating all, uh, all the parking to the right side, on the adult soccer fields, to all parents and people bringing their kids in and out. The front line will be opened up in some of the cases for them, there's gonna be overflow parking in the road. And they're gonna take tenant spots. Our, our, the way we're doing our, for the residents, is the school circle. We're putting parking there, so residents can park in the front. They'll get, they'll know the, uh, the program and the times, uh, of the program, and utilize their spots on the front. On the left side, where they operate the concessions out of now, uh, the soccer league will be given, uh, full access to that for the people who need to come in early and set up, and who also bring their own kids to it as well. So, we're gonna, uh, yes, we're gonna lose parking spaces due to the fifty-five residents that are gonna be there. Uh, but, but we are opening it all up, so they can about park anywhere, uh, like they do now.
'Cause they will take and drive in and go park in those spots. And those, those, those mother, make the kids go there, um, I think-
I think the architect has figured right out, what he can fit is about a hundred and seventy, is a hundred, about a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-five spots. The biggest problem, we got a parking lot that can fit seventy cars, but only twenty-five cars park in it, 'cause unfortunately, if people don't have lines in a big square, they don't know how to park. They park this way and that way, and you underutilize the space you have. Uh, so, striping the parking lot's gonna be huge. We'll be able to increase the amount of vehicles. We'll get in the one parking lot, because you're designating, this is your little square box, you have to park here, versus this whole thing's open to you, you're the first one here, you're fifth one here, and- versus this whole thing's open to you. You're the first one here, you're fifth one here, and they take wherever they, they park. And that was the biggest complaint that we heard from the soccer club, is if it was more organized in how parents park, they could definitely fit more in there than what they're getting now. So with, with resurfacing and striping the parking lot, I think it's actually gonna increase the utilization or efficient, resources of fitting more in there. But I, I'm not gonna say that it's gonna solve the parking problems that are currently going on or that will continue to go on.
You wanna teach yourself and, and fight and get pissed out. You tell mama she can't park right there and she comes running in there with her son, the dog, and the plate, whatever that. They gonna park where they, I don't see how you gonna keep them from parking in that spot.
Yeah, i- i- if it's open, they're gonna park there. If it's open, they're, they're gonna park there, for sure.
Well, they got, they, if it's a plate to park, they gonna park. I mean, and then the tenant comes in, park his car from work, you know. I've seen it all the way around that building November. Six grandchildren and three children alone.
Right.
My car, the whole, if I accept, from accident.
Still got used to it, understand.
I, I, I can see a problem. I don't know how you solve and keep them out of the tenant's parking space.
But you're gonna repay the parking lot.
We, we, we are, and we're increasing the size of it in the back.
Architect indicated it's just sufficient parking, and if for some reason you didn't, would you be willing to add parking to accommodate it?
I think we're utilizing about all the, all the area between the, the, the pavement and the building. We have some green out front and out, outside of that, there's no green anywhere else. We're, we're putting in picnic shelter and some playgrounds and stuff and that'll take some of the side green area and we're gonna extend parking inside where we can at the gym and outside of leaving the front yard untouched, which we could potentially pave or let them park in the grass. We're going over all, 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 that parcel and doing something maybe on the, the field itself. Then you've got some additional green that the elementary school has that could be paved out. And I, I'm not sure that the soccer club utilizes any of the school's parking. I'm sure they do. But extending down into that parking lot as well.
They play soccer down there. Call them the H's and the elementary school. That's parking down there, they have enough space. And now the parents are coming to play, bringing their child to play down there. So there's no parking on that end. If you gonna use your field around, they use the whole school up there. I mean, I can see a real problem with parking. The parents, you know. Just that, two, three, my grandchildren, my wife and I took us all the time just to give them where they needed to be.
Right.
To play these things. Sometimes we can get a parking space. I mean, I can, I can see a problem with parking and parents are gonna, if you haven't got something in it, something that you don't have, put a fence around and they got a car to get in, they will park in any spot, any spot they get in. And there are fights when it burns, I mean, when the fire comes in, you park this car in this spot. Uh, you go in the house and fix up. I, I mean, that, I can see a problem there. And one group comes in and plays and that over there, they're trying to get out of there.
Did you have any kind of drawing or anything that you can show us what it's gonna potentially look like? I think that would have been helpful if we'd had that in our package.
We've got that. We've got that.
Yeah, we've got this. I was talking about the structure itself.
The architects are still drawing.
Okay.
If I understood you correctly.
Yeah, we've got this, I think, yeah. We don't?
We don't have that.
Mm-mm. We don't.
We don't. This is still on the sheet that we was, don't have.
While Hunter passed down in the back of the building, uh, it's nine wheelcases, uh, approximately thirty, I didn't hear the tape written when I was over there, thirty, thirty-six inches on a diameter across. Will they be removed? I don't, the right, the livelihood is a cleanout. A fully cleanout, BBC cleanout, but I don't know what.
Oh, you're talking about all those little concrete things? Are, I'm assuming those are septic of some sort? About right directly behind the building?
I call them wheelcases, really. Look like it's a cap on top of the cement, I mean, goes in the ground.
Yeah, my, our, our.
And we'll have a hazard to, uh, kids going in, I mean.
There's a.
Go back to the county's liability. Look like we're opening that cell.
English one oh one, my bad.
What, what, what protection does the county have?
Well, it, it would be the, the same as we would have in, in any other type of project. And that's one thing I wanted to make sure that everybody was clear on. This is another one of those cases where if they can get the okay that the property's rezoned for apartments, then they can start the application process. They're gonna have to do a site development plan, kind of like what we did, what we did with our solar people. Where you said, "Look, we're gonna say okay, but then you have to come back with a site development plan." So in our zoning ordinance, you know, we got density requirements, we got setback requirements, we got green space requirements, we got parking requirements. All of those will have to be addressed in a plan that is yet to come. You know, but again, they can't get that far until they can get the okay to submit their applications.
I thought you said the architect was already drawing it in?
They're, they're working on a, a application, not a.
Excuse me, well, I mean, the way I understood it, you said the architect is my correct?
Yes, sir. He, he, he's working, but, but the, the building layouts, that's a small part of the full developed set of drawings and details and UL list. He, he won't have a, a set ready to turn into building permits for building review. It, it, it's more of a conceptual, uh, what you're looking at now, but everything filled in. So all the spaces can be seen of potential what they could be or what they're gonna be. And then the full set would come after the award along with the civil engineer and along with our environmental to tell us what those concrete things are out back and what to do with them. They'll recommend what to do with them. We'll be tying on the water, tying in the sewer, so we'll no longer need any wells, septics or anything of that nature. Because currently, the, the school's still on a septic system. So I was assuming those were septic tanks.
Do the service, do you or not? Mr. Edcock, I saw him, he would have an inch and a half water tap and you'd have a sanitary sewer tap, uh, where Mr. Forty, I'm getting my information, Mr. Edcock, Mr. McGinn, Sir, the part, Mr. Rogers and Mr. Bird, they, when they ran the intercept line down, they tied into line and he does not even know the sanitary side coming off of that.
Right, I, I didn't.
That was the day when I was talking with, and yesterday.
I, I didn't know he was actually tied into that sewer system.
And he asked me how many apartments. I said, "Sir, I don't know none. I don't even have enough. I don't have enough units or anything." And he asked me about the appliances in each one, you have a washing machine in each apartment, uh, each unit.
We're gonna have washer and dryer hooked up, yes, sir.
Washing machine, dishwasher.
So they all, on Saturday morning, they all dumped in one time, put sass.
All the civil engineering, all this is gonna be addressed by a site plan. This is just a rezoning. Before they do any of this, they're gonna have to get building inspection, environmental inspection, civil engineering. Everything's going to be addressed in the future. You're just focused on rezoning. And all these hoops you're talking about, they're, they will be addressed at the proper time through building inspection, through Virginia Department of Health.
That's right.
We know where the water and sewer is. There's been talk of us bringing it to them. Of course, they're not gonna have fifty-five units on old septic system. All that will be upgraded. They're gonna spend between eight and ten million dollars to do this. I'm not trying to be passionate, it's just all of these things will be addressed at the appropriate time through the appropriate procedures, whether it be through the state or our local zoning department or a site plan with engineering review, engineering spec, civil engineering, all that stuff.
Well, thank you, Mr. Lo, but we didn't know that. You just told us on that, if I.
Well, we, we made it clear that they're gonna have to follow the permitting just like any other apartment complex, just like any other project. They'll have to do the site plan, they'll have to do building plan. You know, those, those things are never approved by a planning commission, but they will be approved by the building official and, and Ms. Hayes will be the one that'll be checking, you know, the sass setbacks and the spacing and the number of units and, and she may even bring that site development plan back to you all again. But, you know, we always go into these with the understanding that we're not gonna let anything happen unless they follow all of the, the plans and requirements. The county has all the codes, both state codes and local codes.
Mr. Chairman, I know that everybody's concerned with the county, how much money it's gonna cost the county for this project. I'd like to ask Mr. Sides if he knows approximately how much it's been costing us from the previous years to keep this building updated. I mean, it's already an expense.
Yeah, it's, uh, it hasn't been a lot spent on maintenance and that's the reason it's in the condition it's in now. But I think as Mr. Hunt alluded to, we looked into what would it cost to put in a roof just to stabilize it. I don't remember numbers, but I know it was in the vicinity of three hundred thousand dollars, I think, just to keep it from getting worse.
Right. Well, I think these opportunities don't come to us every day. And if you want progress in the county and you wanna grow, maybe this is something we do need to consider.
And Mr. Chairman, I think, I mean, you know, we're talking about if the board of supervisors are not smart enough to make sure that, that the county is gonna be safe in this thing, I mean, you know, that's, that's something we can't help. But I think what they're asking for is to rezonate it to, to, to get the project started and hope they're gonna do it exactly the way it should be done.
And, and perhaps we weren't clear, the reason why they have to get the rezoning now is that one of the components that you have to have in your package when you apply for state and federal rehabilitation money is something called a zoning certification. And you have to prove to the state and the feds before they expend all their time, energy and money reviewing your project, that it's properly zoned for the end result that they receive.
That's correct.
So this is just to get this ball rolling. And as Mr. Haymore aptly said, that the county, every step of the way, we will ensure that we're protected. This rezoning is no guarantee this project actually occurs. It just allows you to have the ability to seek the money.
That, that is correct.
You cannot go forward with this project if the money from the state and federal credits do not materialize.
As I stated before, it, it is a very competitive tax credit application process. A lot, a lot has taken place over the years, but the past couple of years, we, we've been very successful with this type of project, with this type of community and getting the buildings versus having to go out and pay them, pay a lot of money for the land or for the buildings, which, which gives us additional points to be more competitive. The zoning is one, one, one piece of paper that goes in a fifteen-hundred-page application. We've got market studies, as Sam was reviewing market studies before we left the office today on the projects, because the state also wants to know, well, if you're building fifty-five units, who's gonna live there? Where are they coming from and can they afford the rents and do they qualify under the restrictions of the entrance? Uh, so, so that's being finalized up along with architects working hard, not only on, on the design or, or the layouts, but we also go through an energy star program that our fresh air ventilation, our appliances, our lighting, our HVAC systems, our water heating systems, all that has to be decided now, put in a spec so that an energy model can be built of the project to ensure that it meets a certain HERS rating so that the state will also fund it. If it don't meet a certain energy efficiency level, they won't fund it either. They don't wanna build a, 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 an apartment that costs you three hundred dollars a month in electric bills. So they get, they go through the HERS raters, third-party HERS raters and energy models are built. So that, that's due tomorrow. The architect's working on that as well, wall sections and recreating wall sections from old plans that we had received. So there's a lot, a lot of things taking place for this application and trying to get it in. But it, no, nothing's a guaran- guarantee that it will actually be awarded. Uh, but if we, we don't get awarded the first year, we will try again next year and, and continue. And these are not inexpensive applications. It, it costs about ten thousand dollars to have it listed on National Register. The minute she shows up here, I'm writing a pretty significant check to her just to get going. Uh, that, and that's just one piece of it. The applications for the state, with everything goes into them, for about twenty-five thousand. And then you got the National Register. And then, once, once, once we have received the award or the allocation, we then write the state a check to secure that allocation before we know if we can secure permanent financing. And then we take off and we go get our equity. And so we have about a hundred thousand tied up into it before we talk to the first investor. So there's a lot of risk. And i- if we didn't feel confident about the community we were working in or about the project itself, we would not take a hundred thousand dollar risk.
Gentlemen, I'd like to say thank you. You have relieved some concerns that I had when I came in tonight. I was pretty well had my mind set somewhere else in another direction. But I understand, just like solar panels and solar farms that we've dealt with, this is just one of a bunch of hoops you gotta jump through first.
And, and it's an ideal, but it's an ideal that we, we, we're hanging our hat on. We've met with the groups that are so passionate about this building and we're ready to put our gloves on.
Thank you. Appreciate your patience with us, even though we're just a recommending body, we still have the right to ask those questions that we've asked tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And, and just to, to make you feel even more comfortable and, and sometimes we take things for granted, but just so that you know, even if they get their credits and tax approvals and historic credits and all that stuff, we're still not gonna allow a building to be built unless they adequately address water, sewer, safety.
And, and also, prior to closing, our, our investors will not allow us to close until your zoning department, your, your, your fire marshal, your building inspection, everybody has approved. And I have a building permit or at least a, a permit ready letter saying, as soon as you give them eight million dollars, we will give them a building permit. So a- all of our stuff will be approved prior to any land acquisition or any transfer of any, and we won't step a foot on it except for the due diligence process and going into building and doing the measuring, getting the environmental abate, or getting the environmental consultant in there to take samples and tell us whatever all our hazards are and how we're gonna deal with them, considering this is a building that's gonna house children.
I'll be honest with you. When I first got the package, I just, I just didn't know. And then now tonight, since you guys have actually broke it down, told us where we're heading with it, I feel a bit better about it. So, and, you know, just nothing to really get heated over, it's just, you just need to, I, I just listened tonight and I feel better now. Okay? So thank you for what you guys have done.
Lesson learned, I will.
I think you did a nice job in answering the question. You say if we had a hundred million, no, we didn't have that when we walked in. This is the first time we saw this, or lay me on the death, we won't eat it. So I hope you understand.
Yes, sir, I do.
We get questions from the taxpayers in the county as well as I know what's right.
And, and my apologies.
What's it gonna cost to take, is this another thing that's gonna cost us? Are we gonna have chains or what we get into this? And all this unseen thing? Why aren't we throwing money away? But we are not throwing money away with this, after it came out.
Yes.
And it's funny to us, but we did not have any of this information. And I don't mean that against anybody, I'm just making the fact that we walked in here tonight, we didn't have absolutely nothing. And we appreciate you taking time and going and doing that.
Well, I apologize. I, I didn't have something better prepared or.
Your explanation, your explanation and putting up made up for it, that's fine.
Staff will do better about pushing information out to you in the future so you can make a better decision. We, we, we should have had more stuff in the package than that. So we apologize for that.
For an excuse, if I can give one, there's been a lot of moving parts and this thing has came together and Sam was talking about it coming up the road. Some, some of these projects, they just give you that feeling. And, and this thing has come together so quickly and so, so many people. come together so quickly, and so, so many people have come on board and called us and talked to us, and we've visited with, it just feels right, and it's come together so quick that it's, it's almost whirlwind at us, we're trying to keep up with getting, staying in front of it.
Personally, I think, um, a building updated that school would certainly add to the community, more so than what's there now for the eyesore.
It's gonna be beautiful, it's absolutely gonna be beautiful.
It should enhance that community.
Thank you too for what you did tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have anything else you'd like to present to us, or any questions to us?
I'm good with you, let's go home.
I'll ask that question, nobody else is presenting it, wish to address this, I thought we closed. If not, in case R nineteen dash zero one one, case R nineteen dash zero one one, you know, a problem here.
Mr. Chairman, in case R dash one nine dash zero one one, I would like to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the request to rezonate this property from A1 to RMF.
I will second that motion.
Motion for Dr. Miller, second to Mr. Bell, to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that case R nineteen dash zero one one be changed to A1 to RMF. Any discussion? If not, this ain't what you hold.
Let's vote.
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Meath?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Case R nineteen dash zero one one, the code A4, three door gap, let the head to the mouth, seven, eight, one.
No problem.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Johnson.
Did you need, we, we probably need one for the record, just for the file. You got, she's, she got one, she's got, yeah, as long as she, the lady up there has it.
Ms. Hayes, his, his old business been addressed?
Just the resolution that you already signed.
So, this was similar to what happened with the previous solar project, or for financing purposes?
That's what I've already, I signed for the gentleman for the.
Yes.
Okay.
Any news?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
No.
And one, at eight thirty-three, twenty-four, you know?
Let's go home.